On the consent agenda, we'll take a motion.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you very much. Any other thoughts or comments, counsel?
Sorry, still no one here.
All right. So move. Continue business and go ahead and, you know, suggested we go ahead and, you know, if we're all agreed, we'll take the same motion.
Starting with consent, I'm sorry, the new business item number one is a rule of the success agreement. Building white collar employees, like their human resources, Denise Parsons. Saw you on the line. Let me saw you there. Get unmuted yourself.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute everyone. You're done. Everybody's unmuted. Denise?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Okay, I'm gonna mute everybody, please.
Go back to that.
Same with two, they're both. Table one and two.
Okay, yeah.
Item number three is a bid waiver for Vermont systems, it's by Park and Rec. You want to take it because Jennifer is on vacation, please.
Parks and Recreation are asking that this Vermont system software be, it be waived. They've been using that for about 20 years. It works extremely well. The only reason why they really need the bid waiver at this point is because we have moved all the information to the cloud. So otherwise, it's a user-friendly system. Park and Rec is very used to it. It works very well, so they're asking for the bid. I'm kind of speaking for Parks and Rec because Jen is on vacation and she has no wifi. She's really on vacation.
No, that's a real vacation, yeah.
Yeah, she might be Vermont with Vermont systems.
We're good. All right, well, any discussion?
So that's what is resolved, Councilor H. Chair has a quick question. So the increases, it's going to probably run out to the cloud, so it's a situation, okay?
Any other questions from the council? Okay, hearing none, we can move that to the.
Consent account.
All right.
Item number four, it's Sage One Field Renovations. Steve, you should be on the line.
How are you? Steve Wood here. Jenna Choa, Casa Booth, myself, looked over the bids, they got Sage One renovation. We decided to eliminate the lowest bidder Aqua Turf Irrigation because their bid was incomplete and not responsible. The panel then interviewed Dorito and Sons and U.S. Pitch Care. The lowest bidder was Dorito and Sons, and they indicated that they would subcontract the field workout and the sod workout. Where U.S. Pitch Care would self-perform all the work themselves in house. When we added alternate number three and number four, which was a larger storage shed and a new scoreboard, because currently theirs does not work all the time. We added U.S. Pitch Care was the lowest responsible bidder. The committee feels extremely comfortable going with U.S. Pitch Care because they have done several jobs over the last couple of years of the same size.
Okay, thanks, thanks Steve. I don't want to wait for this for a while, so it's good, good to see you moving along and appreciate your work on it, on Jen and Park and Rec. So, any other questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to our consent agenda.
Okay, item number five is a budget transfer to clear all weathered accounts. Kevin Delaney, look at Denise on the line.
Kevin?
I'm going to unmute everyone, so please, if you're not Kevin, be quiet. All right, just so that we can see if we can find, Kevin, if you called in, I'm not, you might be on one of the calls. Everyone is unmuted. Kevin?
Yep, good evening. This is a standard over budget as we have the last couple of months. We had a couple of items that ended up slightly over budget. A little extra duty work for the police force, specifically with GHO and a couple of construction projects. And then water usage at the mobile home park was a little higher than budgeted, and so these are just transfers within the budget to clean that up.
Pretty standard stuff, we haven't seen before. All right, so any other questions, Kevin? Hearing none, we're okay, we'll move this item five to our consent motion later.
Thank you. Item number six, employment and extended employee benefit consultant contract with June 30th, 2021. Kevin, it's one of yours too.
Good evening, this is Kevin again. We've had, five years ago, the town was paying a commission base consulting fee. Paid to the insurance companies for both life and health insurance. At that time, the town went out to bid and elected to use USI Insurance as the broker we paid directly. It has worked out really well. The town signed a multi-year contract moving life insurance from the Hartford to Anthem and saving considerable money. We've also worked closely with this broker over the last three years as we've had significant high claims and worked through that. And finally, the broker has been instrumental in working with the union coalition group so that both the town and the Board of Ed health plan has worked well. We're coming up on the end of our health insurance contract with Anthem, so believe it's in the best interest of the town to continue working with this broker. And the final thing I will point out is, in fiscal year 2015, when the town went out to bid for this, we were paying $59,500 for commission fees. The broker is continuing their existing fee of $55,000, so continuing this for one year is actually $4,500 less than we were paying annually back in 2015 for what I think is considerably better service.
Okay, great. Well, that sounds good. We're saving the town some money and getting some benefits out of. So, okay, any other questions from Kevin? Hearing none, we'll move this to our consent motion.
Thank you. Mr., may I, if I may, walk back to.
Yes. Yes.
So this, going back to, we did, so item number one, it's a rule of the success agreement about white collar employees. Denise, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Denise Parsons. Good evening. We are presenting to you the contract renewal for the white collar. Kevin Delaney, Arosh and I met about three months ago and started looking over the contract language. We were able to meet with Paula Popowski, who's the union president, and do an off-the-record contract. We did not use shipment in Goodwin for this. We were able to do it just between the town and the union president. A very successful outcome, I think. I'll go over a few of the pointers. We were able to remove language that applied to white collars working on Sundays for the library. I know the library is very interested at some point in trying to reopen on Sunday, so this language kind of clears that up and lays the path in case they do get that approved at some point. We also added language to stop leave accruals during long-term absences. This is something we've been trying to get in all the contracts, so we are happy to get approval on that. We did add the language regarding new hire vacation. I know we did that with a couple of other contracts to make it a little bit easier for us to do recruiting for new hires because our old vacation language is outdated, so we were able to get that as well. We adjusted the family sick leave to mirror other contract languages, and the wages were doing two and a quarter each year for three years, retro to July 1st. This contract did expire June 30th. The union did meet and vote and approved on their end, so we're presenting it to council for approval.
Okay, thanks Denise. And I obviously, I assume Denise self-arrows, think this is a good contract with the town, fair for both sides, for both sides.
Yes.
Okay. We got some things corrected that we changed, so that's good. Anyone else? Any comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent approval later. Thanks.
Well, we are on it though, one with item number two.
I'm also.
Good evening, buddy.
Hi Steve.
Yeah, good evening. It's Steve Wozniak, Fire Marshal, also resident at 78 Madison Drive. On this item, we're looking to take the current position of Deputy Fire Marshal as a contracted person up to employee status. For some reason that the position as it stands now, paid with a 1099 format, is not covered by workers' compensation insurance. And the current Fire, Deputy Fire Marshal Joe Del Conti, just retired after 23 years as a backup to Matt and myself. So we're just looking to get it up into the, the, the status of an employee so we could compensate him correctly.
Okay. Yes, in summary, it said that the funding would change to a thousand dollar.
Yeah, that's all it is, is it's going from contractual services up to salaries. That's all it is. All this person does is as a backup for us if we're not around, may work extra at the Berlin Fair if needed, or like stand by at a firework show. Currently, it's one of the two of us at this point, and I'd like to replace him with somebody in the fire service, obviously.
This would be an existing employee.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
This would be an existing town employee.
No, it would be not, no, the position, he retired and moved to Florida, it's open as an additional appointment as a Deputy Fire Marshal.
Neither one of them employees. The first one was on standby, it's only for emergency, and the one who provided this, it's like 23 years, second for that time. So we have each a second backup by law. Steve's out, somebody needs to back him up.
Thank you.
Yes, you already told us that. Will that be eligible for fringe benefits?
No. No.
Okay, any other questions for Steve? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to the consent motion later. Thanks Steve.
You're welcome.
Enjoy the vacation. Item number seven is a purchase of training ammunition. I believe Deputy Chris Soucy is on the line.
Hi, it's Chris Soucy, everyone. So this is just our annual purchase of ammunition for firearms training throughout the year. We typically shoot, qualify three times, and of course, throughout the year when we hire someone new, we put them through additional training.
Okay, we've seen it before. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent motion later. Thanks, Chief.
No problem.
Item number eight, again, it's for you, Chris, it's the police department, you're on, then the bid waivers, just order approval. You're on.
So this is just, this is kind of some bookkeeping, just boilerplate language from last year. We're going forward, we'll do this every year because the threshold on the clothing allotments typically exceed $10,000, and there's no way for us to predict where employees are going to use that money, what vendor. So this is just asking for a waiver of the bidding procedures for the vendors that we commonly use and commonly exceed that threshold.
Okay, thanks. Thanks Steve. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move this to our consent motion later. Thanks, Chris.
Item number nine is $18,500 budget transfer to fund the installation of the air conditioning center room for a police station.
Yeah, so we're just chipping away at some renovation items at the PD. This one's kind of been on the radar for a while now. Our detective bureau has some cooling problems and the space that we use for training and citizens' police academies, when, when you get about 10 people in there, it gets uncomfortable, so we're looking to address that with portable units similar, if not identical, to what we put in our men's locker room, which worked out great.
Good, yeah, so the locker room's working out well, right, so far?
Yeah, it's beautiful. I wish we did it sooner.
Yeah, that's good. I'm amazed it didn't happen sooner. I mean, you know, years ago, but whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So it's the same thing we're doing, and it works, so all right. Must be having fun in there with this hot weather.
Yeah.
Questions for Chris? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent motion later on.
Great, thank you. Item number 10 is a $200,000 budget transfer to fund the purchase of police vehicles. Deputy Soucy?
So, in the capital budget, we didn't get any funding for patrol vehicles. Last fiscal year, we received funding for four. We actually haven't received any of them yet. One is going to be delivered this week, Thursday, so we're, and two are going to be coming right behind it. So because of the COVID-19 shutdowns and things like that, things got a little delayed, but generally takes about nine months to get the vehicles in. This will take care of four additional vehicles, and we're still trying, we're still playing catch-up. We're putting a lot of miles on the car, over six, have over 70,000 miles on them, and by the time they're due to be replaced, they'll be over 100,000 miles as well. So, again, the money's coming from surplus and basically for unfilled positions from vacancies we had. There was, there's some surplus funding there, the majority is coming from transfers from those accounts.
And these were cars, these are from this, this year. These are cars we didn't get in this year's budget, right?
No, no, we, yeah, yeah, yeah. No vehicles were funded for this current fiscal year.
I mean, I mean last year, I mean, over the new year now, but I mean, last year's budget, they're the cars that were already budgeted for last 20, yeah, 20, yeah.
Yeah, these are fiscal, fiscal year 20.
Yeah, it takes that long, huh, to get them?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, all right, well, I guess we're gonna get caught up, so we did it, all right, so. All right, so that, any other, we have no other questions for Chief? We'll go ahead and just to our consent motion later.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
No problem.
Item number 11 is waive the bidding process for Atlantic turf. Still year 2021. Steve Wood?
How are you? The Parks and Grounds is looking to waive the, for Atlantic turf and golf.
I did that, Steve, sorry. Go ahead.
Start again. The Parks and Grounds are looking to waive the bidding process for Atlantic turf and golf. We'd like to use one vendor to purchase seed fertilizer and granular pesticides. What's been going on in the past is by buying it from multiple vendors, when something goes wrong and something dies on the field or it just doesn't look right, and you reach out to the vendor or the contractor, they're like, well, that wasn't us, that was something you've got. So we'd like to put everything into one, and also Atlantic offers a great organic fertilizer line, which is safer for our kids and the people using our fields.
Okay, that's, that sounds great. Any questions for Steve? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent motion later.
Thank you. Item number 12, waive the bidding process for services from Central Connecticut Lawn Services, this is early at 2021.
Steve, you're on.
Yep. Once again, the Parks and Grounds has been using Central Connecticut Lawn Service of Berlin for 15 years. They primarily do all the liquid fertilization, insecticides, fungicides around town. Currently, right now, we're battling a problem up at Sage Three's infield with a bug that is called Billy Bugs. And the only type of turf they attack is bluegrass, and if anybody hasn't been up there, the infield does not look that well. Central Connecticut has been out multiple times, even over 4th of July weekend, to try to help us combat that. And we know that we're going to exceed the $10,000 year with Central Connecticut.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent motion.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is a $50,000 budget transfer to fund the rack body. For public grounds.
This is my last one of the night, I promise. The Parks and Grounds departments would like to use funds that were appropriated and earmarked from several accounts that were not used due to the COVID virus, which led to the cancellation of high school and youth sports in town, along with the mild winter. The money would be used to purchase a rack body truck with plot. The grounds departments currently does not have enough vehicles for the staff, especially in the summer, with additional seasonal employees, which leaves us borrowing seven vehicles, several vehicles every day.
Any other questions on this? So, just like, so I had a conversation just, and they'll go for not only this item, but I think there's some other purchases, Steve, probably some from your department. I don't remember them, they're on our agenda, but the work finance, their thoughts on any capital expenditures, and I tend to agree if the council agrees. We've got to kind of wait and see, but we're not going to stop the process. We, we'll go through the process, get, you know, estimates, get everything kind of ready to go, and it'll come back to us. They're thinking they wanted to wait till fall, maybe October, just to see how the COVID situation plays out and our tax receipts play out before we expend any, any funds. Obviously, it's an emergency and one of these things, they would do it, but they asked if we would agree with them, and not, again, probably as we get to the end of the year and get everything wound up to go. But we might have to wait a little bit just to see, maybe September, how things are going. That was kind of their answer. They weren't going to. They didn't want to improve any of this. They asked if we would agree with them. I said, I think that makes sense. I think we're trying to be cautious to see what, how this all plays out. Not saying we're not doing it, but we just want to wait a little bit, so.
Completely understand.
But we'll, we'll keep the process moving, so when it, when it, everything looks good, then, you know, people, some of the other stuff coming up, they'll be ready to go. But I know it's already, isn't there like a month? Lack time anyway, to say yes, I think we said buy it tonight, it's going to take some. Yeah, so get, you know, do, do your homework, get ready, just, we're not going to expend the funds and come back to the council and or the work finance or the payment issue. You guys, okay, the council with that, does that make sense? Certain circumstances to see what's coming. All right, so we'll go ahead and move this to our, with that, yeah, we'll move that to our consent.
Appreciate it. Have a great night, guys.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Item number 14 is a $110,000 budget transfer to fund an excavator. Jump out the corpse.
Hey, I'm going to unmute everybody. I don't know where Mike is as far as what quality. So everyone's being unmuted, and once Mike identifies himself, I'll unmute everybody.
Check it in. Hello, Mike Ahern, check it in. Okay. Nice to see you folks. I actually tried WebEx, but I can't get the audio working, so apologize for that. This, this item is, again, similar to Steve Woods and the police department's. It's using available funds from the fiscal 2020, four accounts that have some money left in them for an excavator. This would allow us to do a little bit more roadwork and road prep. We have a 2011 John Deere backhoe that's a little, I wouldn't say undersized, but I think we're stressing it a bit with the work we're doing. So it'd be nice to get a compact excavator that can handle, like fully handle a precast, a catch basin sump, some of the heavier, some of the heavier items. And also, the two, the backhoe has been experiencing a couple of maintenance issues. We actually had two road jobs interrupted because we had it in the shop, so this would not impact the mill rate. This would just use available funds. It's, the new, the new excavator would cost approximately $110,000. It's, it'd be similar to the, in the package we gave you, the John Deere 75J information. The fact that it's rubber tracked also allows it to maneuver in situations where the backhoe might have trouble. We also could do drainage ditch work. After we finish the road prep in April through October or November, we can do some tree work and some maybe even stump removal, and also clean out some ditches when the ground firms up when the frost hits. So this, this is the request for that budget transfer.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I don't know if you've heard, what we said before about the capital equipment?
Yeah, I heard it.
So, again, we'll, you know, we'll, I mean, go forward and get it set up, and, you know, we'll definitely see how things go, and as early as we can, for the financing, the council. We're not going to get, no one's opposed to them, just, just be a little cautious, spend any money. I know it's not new money, but see what happens. It might be a little bit.
Understood.
I'm sure we'll get there. Any questions from Mike?
Yes, we could probably, yes, sir. Glad to see the town moving in this direction. The loader backhoe is kind of a tiny, foreign business at this point. My only question is, we have a trailer to come here and.
We're going to be buying the trail this year. We have funds for that already, so that's already on our list.
Because the backhoe gives you mobility, Chris.
Yeah, we need a new trail anyway, so we're going to get one that will, will actually handle this excavator, this size excavator.
If the attachment's available, if I'm in the limit, let you say we're not, we'll take it.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. No other comments or questions, we'll move that to our consent motion for later.
Thank you. Item number 15, $60,000 budget transfer to fund repairs to the highway department front loaded.
Yes, sir. Okay. Our front, our loader that usually is in the Town Farm Lane Physical Services complex is a solid machine. It's a workhorse. Both Jim Simons and Steve Karp have said it's worth keeping. It has 11,000 hours on it, but, so it needs a little TLC right now. So Jim Simons and WY Clark have gone through it thoroughly, and they have about a shopping list, which is included in your packet, of various systems that need to be rebuilt, replaced, overhauled, and this will get us probably another eight or nine years of operating time out of that. It may be more. So the, again, it would, the approach would be to use available funds from, let's see, three, let's see, one, two, you know, several accounts that are available from fiscal 2020 to fund these repairs and then keep this baby rolling.
Hey, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Some trouble, next thing we, about working down there. Same thing, you know, just go forward with operation and see how it goes. I'm sure it'll go fine. Any other questions? Now, we'll just start consent, the motion later. Yeah, 60, all right.
Item number 16 is a $75,000 budget transfer on the wood chipper.
Okay, you ready? Okay. The existing wood chipper from the highway department is 15 years old. It's been required more time in the garage recently, and it's not, I think it, when it was purchased, it was more for brush and pruning, prune limbs, not the logs the guys are trying to process right now. So, and I know this is probably going to go on the consent agenda if it makes it, but we were proposing to get a drum-type. But we were proposing to get a drum type chipper that could probably process between 15 and 18 inch diameter logs. That would save some, um, trucking and off the disposal costs. And we can keep the existing chipper for second line unit as long as it keeps going for parks and grounds, the golf course and just lighter work. So that would be, uh, that's a $75,000 budget transfer request.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, same, uh, same issue with this, not, not against the equipment at all. I'm just going to probably hold off a little bit, but let you do your homework and get ready to do it. Later, we'll bring back quickly and add to those, so.
Right.
Move this, uh, move this to our consent, uh, motion as well later.
Thank you. Item number 17 is a traffic guideline, street line, empty the door.
Yes. Um, this, we're going to, we're proposing to use for our center line, our edge lines, our arrows, stop bars, that sort of, um, work for this, for the next, until this winter. We want to use the CROG contract number 695. It has all the unit costs in there, all these contractors, there's three contractors in there, so we can pick and choose whichever one we think is most cost effective and available. So it's sort of a nice ad hoc or à la carte way for us to do, do the roads that we've paved, freshly paved, and also to rework some painted, striping and stop bars.
All right, thanks. Okay, another question. Mike on this? Now, we'll move this to our consent motion. Hey, Mike, before you go, so just, you know, if any of this equipment, and I'm sure the board of finance would agree, if there's something that's really, really urgent, you know, if something breaks down, I mean, just like give us a prize of, you know, I'm sure emotional of the progress of getting ready to buy some of these pieces of equipment. And again, as we move this whole area, but if it's some, this one maybe, whatever one is, is very important for some reason that pops up, let us know. Not overall, we're kind of lumping together down the road. Be nice on the board of finance. Just keep that in mind.
Okay. Um, just so I'm clear, are you proposing to put the traffic guideline item also on the consent agenda?
The traffic? No, no, not that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Not that. That's probably important, we work our roads.
Well, we have two roads we need to strike now, so.
No, 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 that, that's not it. It's just, it's just the capital items, the capital equipment.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, it's going on consent.
It's on our consent, yes, and we'll go to our, so we're just kind of lumping all our motions we're approving tonight, all our items into one motion later to kind of expedite our, our agenda time. But yeah, we're good with that.
Okay.
We're good with all of them. Just, we're just holding off a little bit on the capital equipment.
Right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
So that's already moved over.
Item number 18 is a $25,000 budget transfer to fund the purchase of a new backhoe.
The golf course, John Z.
Uh, yes, this is similar to the last few items where we're looking to purchase a used backhoe. Speaking with Jim Simons, the current backhoe we have is 28 years old and that originally was at the public grounds and given to the golf course in 2010. Recently had some failures with this backhoe and hydraulic pump, the main hydraulic pump went, which is approximately $5,000 item. Jim Simons had recommended that it's not, the backhoe's no longer worth being fixed at this point. So this is kind of where we're at with this.
Okay, so, so, I mean, this is on our capital equipment, but this one is, so the one you have is broken for good, I guess, right?
Yes, we're currently using a front end motor only from public grounds and that is probably 35 years old, I would think. We don't have a backhoe right now, but if, if push comes to shove and we need to borrow one from another department, we could still do that, so.
Okay. Now, without, have the board of finance here to see, to pick and choose, I really don't want to have to do that. But maybe we, obviously we're consenting to all of the, maybe this one in particular when it goes to, I don't know, when's the board of finance meet?
Thursday.
Thursday, so, yeah, next, this, this Thursday. Oh, okay, okay. So, oh, so again, whatever, you know, this one, this one sounds, you know, they don't have the equipment at all, so, I mean, it, you know, I think we're okay with it. This is the particular one we have to buy because otherwise they can't get their work done. So, you know, whatever, a rush at the board of finance, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
This might be one that, I can't remember, I don't know if we, in talking to the chairman, if he picked out certain pieces, I don't remember, he just, I think we're kind of blanket holding off, but it sounds like perhaps they would, I think we'd be happy to see go forward quicker than the others, since they have no, no equipment at all. So we'll move this to our, obviously consent motion later.
Thank you. Item number 19. Timberland Golf Course, a statement of need for the clubhouse and surrounding area.
Um, again, this, this is from the, in, in conjunction with the golf commission, which involved the statement of need. And at this point, would like to send, send a statement of need to have the council send a statement of need to the building commission. And attached is the statement of need. And if you want me to go over any of it, we can, we can do that.
No, I think we know. Pretty old, as are some of us. But, so yeah, no, I think, I'm just speaking, I just said me, I just said me, as a some of us, that's all, I didn't say. I'm not myself. So, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, I think we know, so it'd be good to send it to a public building and let them look at it and see what we can do moving forward. That would be my opinion, I think.
Excuse me.
Yes.
This is Gail Lemire from the golf commission.
Yes.
Since this was on the agenda, um, I was just hoping to frame this in the sense that really what the commission has been talking about for the few years and probably the council at times has as well, is really looking at what is the long-term goal for, uh, or what do you all see as really a vision for Timberland Golf Course? Because that really kind of underlies what, even when we come later to the options that we're recommending for, um, cost-saving measures and enhanced revenue. So I think it's important to look at what the long-term vision for this facility is as really the, the underpinning for what you want to do going forward. Because that will drive, um, some of the decisions that you may make, whether you see it as, you know, revenue genate rating, um, an asset, both, uh, a, a, a revenue opportunity or amenity or some combination. So we're, we're thinking big here with a long-range plan that you may want to consider.
Yes, no, I think we, yeah, we understand that. We know that we need to look at Timberland from a lot of different directions and see what we're going to do with it. So, I mean, I look at this as just a start of some information on what the, you know, what the public building will tell us about the expansion, if it fits into our plan, whatever the plan may be. And I don't know what that plan is yet, but yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's, this could be maybe part of the bigger plan. Or maybe with some other direction, but at least we're getting going. So we'll be at the point later when we make some final decisions that we'll be ready to do this if, if we need, need be. So the public building could, you know, give us some figures and more in-depth information to make the right decision later on. We'll agree with that. I mean, it's not, it's certainly not going anywhere. We're just going to let that look at it and come up with a more specific plan to, if we, if we do need to do this part of it. Of course, some information to decide on. So we've got to move this over to our consent motion later as well. Item number 20.
Number 20, Timberland Golf Course, single rider cart increase. So it's a relation of the increase result of the COVID-19.
John?
Yes, during the outbreak of, or the height of the outbreak of the COVID-19, we were still, still able to remain open and also use motorized carts with single rider only. And then effective June 17th, um, they were allowing people in the same household to share a cart and people in different households, they would have to wear a mask and one, one driver would be designated to drive throughout the full 18 or nine holes. So basically, with the increased amount of rounds that we were seeing, um, being played and demand has increased for the golf carts also. And in many occasions, we're running short on golf carts during, during the day and basically having to turn people away that want to potentially ride. So an effort to try and maximize our 75 cart fleet and keep the revenues in line, we're looking to try and adjust the nine-hole, 18-hole and nine-hole cart special single rider rate. And you can see the, the numbers in the, in the chart that I had put in the agenda item. So we would go from nine holes, 1125 to $15, 18 holes, 1925 to $25. And the nine-hole cart special would go from 925 to $13.
Dan?
Yes. Is there any rationale for roughly a 30% increase? Just more or less to try and get people to, to try and start doubling up because most of the people are still riding in single, single rider. They're taking a cart by themselves and what it's doing is it's creating more wear and tear on the golf course itself because you're getting more carts out on the golf course and then also wear and tear on the golf carts themselves.
I have a question, Council Beach. Can you, how does this compare to what some of the other courses in the area are doing? Are they pricing out this type of increase?
Yes, they're, they're, they've gone up in, in their cart rates. And we're kind of following along with, with, let's say Stanley, for instance, is one of the last municipalities that, that has gone to the, the single cart rate. And all private, legal golf courses have gone earlier than this. And Stanley is actually a little bit, they've gone up more than what we're looking to go up.
Okay. Well, as long as, I mean, I guess we're, as you just said, remaining competitive, I guess, with everything. And I understand things have changed a little bit because of it, so. That's, that's your recommendation from the golf.
And if, excuse, people, if people want to, to ride in, in a cart together, then they obviously would pay the fee previous, the fee that was adopted by the council the beginning of the season. This is only if someone wants to ride by themselves, basically.
All right. If we're good, we'll move that to our consent, our consent motion later.
Mike? Thank you. Item number 21 is Timberland Golf Course, cost reduction options. John, you taking this one?
Yep, and I'll start and then I believe Pete DeFazio was going to explain some of these himself. The, uh, the golf commission has come up with some cost reduction options that they proposed to the council. And you can see in the packet was a list of those reductions listed. Pete, if you want to go ahead and explain those.
Yeah. Um, well, the, the first one is the credit card surcharge. I think that's kind of a no-brainer. I think we're doing that in the town when we pay our water bill, when we pay anything online, we have a surcharge for the credit cards. So I mean, that, that one there is, it's up to you, but it costs us roughly 17,000 a year in, in surcharge money and, and interest. The, the other ones are a little, a little, uh, they're a little tough, but, but they're options that, that have to be discussed. And again, we don't recommend these at all. In a perfect world, we'd all consider Timberland the asset that it is and it's a part of the town and it's what makes part of Berlin great. And we would, we would accept when we make money and we would accept when we lose money. But, um, you know, everyone wants, wants options and, and these are them. You know, the golf course is a seven-day-a-week operation. But yet, um, you know, we're, we're, every weekend we do, we do pay overtime and that's a union thing and, and that's fine. That's the way it is. But if, if you want to save money in that regard, uh, when union negotiations come up, that's one option that's in front of you that you, that can be discussed. And also with reduction, the, the next one is the reduction of labor costs where, um, again, union labor, uh, minimum wage, the, the, the minimum wage goes up for the union labor. They're doing a job that someone who could make a lot less money could do. You know, again, we don't want to see any of that, this, this happen, but it's an option. And then the last one is to just outsource the entire golf course. And, uh, that would probably have some implications with residents, no doubt. Because they would not be enjoying, they would not enjoy some of the resident benefits that they're currently getting today. You know, we, we can't, we, we can't cut costs on, on fertilizer because the grass, the grass won't grow. And if you don't have good grass, you don't have a golf course and nobody would come to play. So, you know, we, we don't, we're, we don't buy an enormous amount of equipment. We buy what we need. We don't even have a wood chipper and we cut down how many trees a year. You know, so there, there's equipment that, we, we can't really cut costs on equipment. So really, the, most of the budget, most of the budget is, over half of the budget is labor. I mean, that's, that's the biggie. That's the biggie.
Well over 50%.
Yeah, for sure. If, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Hi, Council Beach, I do have a question. The credit card surcharge that you're looking to apply, what percentage are you currently being charged? 3%, 4%?
Yeah, it's approximately 3.
3%?
Yes.
And you're looking to increase it to?
Well, what we would do is we would, we would charge, we would pass that surcharge on to the golfer. So we would charge an extra dollar or whatever, whatever it is, we would charge that to the golfer when they, uh, when they come with a credit card and cash is one price and credit card will be another.
Mayor, this is Kevin, may I speak?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I, I just want to be clear, there is a state statute that prevents municipalities from passing this along. The item referenced with the tax department is because individuals are actually paying a separate company named Invoice Cloud. They're not actually paying the community. We have investigated with Invoice Cloud and a few other companies, but because of the high transactional nature of the golf course versus, let's say, an annual bill through your tax bill, to date, we've been unable to find a party willing to work with us. We'll continue to look, uh, we being finance, but at this point, um, until we can put a third inter-party in there, state statute prevents municipalities from passing that fee along directly to consumers.
So, so the option is not really an option?
Guess not, correct.
No, it's, it's, it's an option if you can get somebody to do it. Kevin, this is Jim Norton. It's an option if you can get somebody to, uh, come in and do that, correct?
Correct.
A separate company, correct? So the approval will allow us to go forward, you know, down the road, without coming to the council again for approval on, on this item. Correct?
Well, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Since this doesn't require any action, it's a discussion item, but I think, looking at the bigger picture here, I think we need a committee, uh, probably made up of some council members and a member from the golf commission to see where we're going. I mean, if we outsource this thing, we don't have to do anything else. I'm not saying we're going to, but I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I believe we should have a small committee. I'd be glad to be on it. And let's look at our options before we piecemeal this thing.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think I, I agree. I mean, this is for discussion and you've given us some options. We certainly have to digest them, but we, we do need to have some more discussion. You know, one of the parts being the, the clubhouse, right? I mean, it's going to go to public buildings, see what they think, how much it's going to cost. I mean, there's a whole lot of different parts here. We need to know what the cost we're going forward, whether we eliminate the whole thing. Obviously, you know, the, it's up to the contractor to do what they're going to do. But I'm not saying we're going there at all, but just a lot to talk about before we certainly be ready, I'm sure is. certainly be ready, I'm sure, as a town, as a council, and a Golf Commission, to make any changes like some of these. So obviously, with the union issues, that's a whole different, that's a whole different issue. So, yeah, so that's a good idea, Peter. I I think, I mean, we definitely want to, let's talk into this.
Put it on the agenda since September.
Yeah, yeah, so we get a committee together and talk about some of these things and see how they will play out down the road. You guys agree? Pete and John?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we've been, Jim too, I know you're there. We, yeah, we need to, I mean, we know, you know, we need to look at the whole program out there, and you guys have been very helpful in improving what you can, you know, and and try to go along with most of those recommendations to improve it. I think it's doing pretty well under the circumstances, but yeah, I know down the road, every town is looking at this. So, yeah, so let's, yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for September. We'll come up with a kind of committee, you guys and a couple council members and whoever else we think needs to be on it, you know, figure out, make it too big, so it's unbuildy, but get some people to have some good discussions, and then they could bring that, you know, to the Golf Commission, to the council, or finance, and hopefully somewhere in the not-too-distant future, maybe we'll have a plan to move forward that maybe everybody's happy with, or let's say most people are happy with, I know we don't want to be too optimistic, but I'll tell you, yeah, they have her optimism, but the more people we can get to, you know, fly into whatever we think we need to do, so. Does that make sense, you guys, everybody here?
Yes, this is Gail. I I think it's a great idea to have a subcommittee. Kevin, that's very helpful information. I think the committee would do well to have someone from the Finance Committee on this subcommittee, because that's helpful information to be put into these discussions and options.
Yeah, good. No, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot here to digest and to figure out what we can and cannot do, and what makes sense, and and what the people want, right? What everybody wants in Berlin. We need to hear from them too at some point, you know, but let's maybe narrow down some of the recommendations that we think would make sense, and then, you know, we have a, you know, I don't know what I call a public hearing, but just a public comment section, you know, once people can get together at some point here, and our, hopefully in our life somewhere, we can all get together again and and then talk. I think it's very hard on these meetings to have a meeting like that to get public input. I just don't think it works at all. But we'll face that as we get through, you know, get through the first part, where we don't need to have a public input. All right, so we'll put that in September. Try and get the committee together to talk about it in the meantime. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-one is this discussion that would be in our motion, but so twenty-two?
Timberland season pass, credit and refund policy?
Uh, yes.
John, can you hold on just a second?
I'm going to mute everyone, including the committee.
And then you'll mute yourself.
And then John just.
What's that?
Hold on just a second. Yeah, we muted everyone, can you unmute yourself, please?
I'm unmuting you. You should be all set, Kevin.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Up until this point, there hadn't been a written policy all the way, even before I started at Timberland. We've, what we've done is, on a case-by-case basis, handled the season pass refund, and it's always been the person would have to provide a some type of metal doc- medical documentation to the park and rec, and then it would go forward to council. Same thing with the Golf Commission, where we've handled a few of these in the past. Medical documentation that the person has suffered an injury or some type of an illness where they no longer could play golf for that season, and it would be a credit for the following season toward their season pass, a prorated credit. And if the person could no longer play golf for the rest of their lives, let's say, they would then be given a prorated refund. We've had one instance when an individual passed away, actually, and we gave a a prorated refund to this person's spouse. So basically, what we we've come together and and put together a policy, and this is stating that the person has to again have medical certification from their treating physician stating that some type of injury or they can, from a sickness state, cannot play golf, and this has to be, going forward, has to be submitted to the Director of Golf by June thirtieth with the letter from the doctor. And then any exceptions to the refund policy who have made on a sole discretion of the Golf Commission to the Town Council. And one of the, one of the things that this does do, it puts a cutoff date of June thirtieth on any refund request or credit request, I should say also. So that's basically what we're looking to have approved is the season pass credit or refund policy.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, well, I mean, it makes sense to certainly have a policy. That's that's a good thing, rather than case-by-case. Obviously, if there were some exceptions, it comes to the Golf Commission and the council, so I mean, I'm in favor of the policy. Is this pretty, whoever, Jonathan or anyone, it's pretty standard, you think, with other golf courses?
Um, I I believe so. I haven't really checked that much into it as far as what they do, but I knew golf courses, they do give refunds, and and I know Stanley does, and credits also, with some type of documentation. And that's basically what we're looking for also.
Yeah, that's important. Yeah, you need to have established policies with everything, so. Okay, any other comments from anyone? All right, we'll go ahead and move this to our consent motion later.
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-three is Timberland season pass credit and refund. Refund for Mr. Gonzalez.
Um, this is from a gentleman by the name of George, Mr. George Gonzalez, and at the last council meeting, if everyone could recall, we had issued him a pass credit for next year's season of the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Now, due to his medical condition and subsequent complications with the uncertainty of COVID, and consulting with his physician, he has chosen to no longer play golf, period. So now he's requesting a prorated refund of, for the first two thousand twenty season pass in lieu of the credit that we had already approved for him. So, and I do have a doctor's note from his treating physician from Yale New Haven, basically stating what I what I had just said.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, any questions on this? Okay, recommended to Golf Commission by, and so go ahead and move this to our motion later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it just, just one other thing, if I could add, that that the golf course was was profitable this year, and I I believe we we came out sixty-two thousand dollars ahead, and I think, believe Pete DeFazio, I've mentioned that already. But I just kind of wanted to reiterate that, if you, if you could.
That's good news. That's great. So you're going to change anything now?
What's that?
That's convenient, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, right, right, that's, yeah. No, that's good, that's good to hear. Appreciate that update. And thank you, Golf Commission and Jonathan, for all the information, and obviously, more, many more discussions to come to, but, you know, fix whatever we can out there and keep it, keep it going for the town.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Agenda item number twenty-four, so referral of the element that's called HVAC upgrades, designing and construction to the Public Building Commission.
Doug?
I want to unmute yourself, Doug.
I'm going to unmute all.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Doug.
How are you? That's the last time this came before council, we didn't have the required statement of need from the Board of Ed, so tonight's submission includes that.
Okay, yeah, I, okay, yeah, I mean, we, we, we all trust this. We we all know this was coming, and we need to do it. So we appreciate getting the statement of need and, you know, moving on to the Public Building Commission. Appreciate that, Doug. So we'll go ahead and move this, unless you guys have any questions, if you have any, we've been talking about this for a while. So, yeah, go ahead and move this, and we'll put it on our motion later. Great, thank you.
Thank you. One hundred fifty-five miles. Thanks to two items, all from Economic Development. Perhaps we can link everyone, other than Chris Edge and Tim Mory. There's a lot of exciting stuff coming down in the tenders. So I start with the agenda item number twenty-five, which is the authorization for the town manager to apply for a steep line, Kensington Sidewalk Project Phase Three for the municipal complex at twenty-seven Farm Lane. Town Farm Lane. Chris? Are you on, Chris? Unmute your phone, please.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, Kevin.
Yes.
Awesome. So the state has now opened up the steep state, excuse me, small-town economic assistance program to communities such as Berlin. We are looking at this point for two different things, one to be the Kensington Sidewalks Project Phase Three. Our last project was to bring the sidewalks from Town Hall down to Main Street and Farmington Avenue. Or the other would be for the roofing and related work for municipal complex groups at twenty-seven Town Farm Lane, as they're in great need, and essentially asking you for permission for the town manager to put forward to get the grant, and if so, to sign any assistance agreements and the like with the state of Connecticut.
Okay, great. That's good that they've opened up some more of this funding, so. Sounds good, and go ahead and put this, any comments? I'm sorry, council anybody? All good? We'll put this, we'll put this on our motion later to approve.
Thank you. Agenda item number forty-six, the authorization to change this to the town abatement policy. Chris?
Yes, thank you very much, town manager. This is a bit of a change from what we've normally done. Right now, with one, the economy, and two, COVID, we're very challenged, not just the town of Berlin, but all of our communities. What we're looking at is adding a new level of abatement, which is if someone spends a minimum of twelve and a half million dollars, essentially via ten-year tax abatement on commercial, a five-year on residential. Now that we've brought in our mixed-use zoning on the Turnpike, we've gotten a lot of interest. The main reason for this is developers and those who have the ability have a lot of choices. They can go in a lot of directions. We're one of a number of towns they're interested in coming into, and really, this is to help bring forward investment. And again, essentially, we're looking at a minimum of a twelve and a half million dollar investment in town to get the tax abatements. The way I look at this is, we have two choices. We could stand where we are, no tax abatement on no investment, or we do a tax abatement that's aggressive, but long-term, we get a great benefit for the town of Berlin, and would love to get your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, and so, and I I know you've been working hard on this, have many discussions, certainly one of the developers on the Turnpike and others. And I know Economic Development, right, was in favor of this the other night they met?
Yes, they were. They were in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's a large investment, over that amount, obviously, over twelve-five. So I, you know, I talked to some other people too, other town developers, different things, and they said, you know, it's really something we should do. I know we really worked on this to make it as fair and just for the town, as well as, you know, to have some interest from developers. We're not giving away the store by any means, and many people have told me that, Mark, you know, why, I mean, you know, tax, taxing nothing's not getting us anything. You might as well bring in these large investments and give a little bit of sweetener to come to town, and then we will have reap the tax benefits for many years to come, so that that seems to be what I've heard from a lot of people in general. So what do you guys think? Good?
Yeah.
Win for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. All right, so that's great, Chris. Thank you for all your hard work. I know you did a lot of roach. I know you, you know, we've all kind of been involved talking about this to get this going, and I appreciate it, so we'll put this to our consent, have more approval, motion later.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Consent.
Thank you.
I have twenty-seven is the tax of pavement for one ninety-six will across Parkway is the proposed seventy-two high-end apartments and eighteen thousand square feet of retail.
This is a developer who's done projects in North Haven, Wallingford, and is looking to continue to invest and move north on the Turnpike. Essentially, we had started discussing this with him approximately three months ago. We started out at a tax abatement that was really untenable for the town of Berlin at that point. I, the town manager, and the mayor have negotiated with this gentleman. We've ended up where we are here on what you see in front of you. It is about half of what he initially had asked for. The good news about these projects is, these projects are not twenty years, which is how we normally look at it tax-wise. These are forty, fifty-year projects that we're looking at for our kids and grandkids. As things are changing in Hartford, as we all know, we need to look to be as self-reliant as possibly can. I think this project's a great way to do it, and I could see the developer potentially continue to invest in town. And he's already shown from the Accura dealership that the projects he does are of a high class and well-paying.
Chris, is this the R C D project?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Turnpike, Turnpike Ridge is the name of it, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know we've done a lot of work on this, obviously, getting the policy done, and talking with Mr. R C D, he definitely brought beautiful dealership and some other commercial property there on the Turnpike and wants to continue. We've had some, you know, frank discussions with him, but it's it's great that, you know, we have come to, I think, an agreement that's fair for everyone, and certainly brings the town, you know, as its development gets built, so serious tax revenue with the future, so.
Absolutely. And and Mayor, if I could add one thing?
Yeah.
He had looked to get abatements on his existing buildings. We had pushed back very hard on that. We gave him abatements already. The good news is, he's going to have between three and four tenants opening their doors between now and the end of two thousand twenty in the existing building. So the good news is we have some opportunities here. The good news is, it's also food-related, which I know everybody, not just at your table, but on the phone, is very excited about for Berlin.
All of the tenants are?
No, no, not not all of them, but at least two, if not three of them are.
What are the others, do we know?
I'm sorry, say again?
What are the others, do we know, yet?
Um, I believe one of them is going to be either a martial arts or kickboxing studio. I believe one is going to be burger-oriented, the other is going to be Thai restaurant-oriented. We don't know on the new building yet, but I know they've had numerous conversations with tenants about that new eighteen thousand square foot building.
Okay, thanks, I was just curious.
You're very welcome.
That's great. I mean, that's great. We're finally, 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 and we've tried for many years. Everybody has to bring development to the Berlin Turnpike and the space that we have left, so it's great to see this. All right, so what do we, so, yeah, okay, so this one, are we good?
Yeah.
Pretty good, all right, so we'll move this to our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twenty-eight is authorization for the town manager to grant change of leasement or license for the portion of the Boulevard to be constructed on property dedicated to public transportation. Economic Development Director?
Yes, thank you, Rocha. Yes, this is essentially looking either an easement or license from DOT. The last portion of the Boulevard going from Farmington Avenue to the train station, there's probably, I don't know how many feet, but say seventy-five, a hundred feet from the end of eighty-nine Farmington Avenue, the rear of it to get to the train. of the Boulevard going from Farmington Avenue to the train station, there's probably, I don't know how many feet, but say seventy-five, a hundred feet from the end of eighty-nine Farmington Avenue, the rear of it to get to the train station, essentially, this is authorized to town manager to do an easement or license from DOT, and, um, this has been, um, sent to planning and zoning, and now back to this body for approval, of course, with Corporation Council's okay in the end.
Great, yeah, now we've obviously sent it there, and we see it come back, and, uh, that's great to get this thing, uh, moving as fast as we can, and it's great, it is moving forward even with our circumstances here, uh, closely, and all the rest, so that's, that's great. So, any questions on this? Quite about it, like, obviously, so, yeah, we'll move this to our agenda approval, agenda item later.
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-nine is authorization for the town manager to, uh, stores for the Boulevard project. Chris?
Yes, uh, this is gonna feel like deja vu all over again. Uh, this is essentially very similar to DOT, this is forever sourced to provide power to the seventy-six apartment and retail and commercial buildings at Steel Center at Farmington Ave. Again, this also had gone to planning and zoning, now back to this body.
Okay, now, great, we certainly have discussed this at length, and, uh, back, again, standing back here, so, uh, I'm sure we're all right, everybody good with this? Any other questions? We discussed this quite a bit, so we'll put this on our, uh, motion approved at the end.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirty, authorization for the town manager to enter into contracts with Brooklyn cleanup, Franklin survey, or area engineering regarding preparation of farming or any construction, filing for eight seventy-three Farmington Avenue, additional survey work for the Boulevard project.
Chris?
I, I believe Jim Mahoney's gonna take these on, he's also on the line.
I'm on the line.
And on the whole, all right.
Right. So, um, one of our, when we entered into the, um, environmental settlement agreement with the owners of eight seventy-three Farmington Avenue, we gained the rights to file an environmental land use restriction on that property, and, uh, that's beneficial to us in that we think it's gonna help us avoid doing an active groundwater remediation system for eighty-nine Farmington Avenue. So, we put together, um, a consultant team to, to, um, file the, to prepare the ELUR for filing, and that would be, actually, it's, uh, um, Halloran and Sage instead of Wig- uh, Wiggin and Dana that we're actually contracting with, because the, um, Halloran and Sage is, is attorney for the eight seventy-three property owner, they're gonna assist in, um, getting the easements, uh, subordinated and other work, uh, coordination with the owner, that was part of the environmental settlement agreement, and it would be funded in part, primarily from our, um, from our insurance company, and a little bit from the Brownfields Grant. Second piece is for a Larrero or environmental consultant to prepare the technical information for the ELUR, and the third piece is, uh, survey work. Uh, we need to, as part of the ELUR, you have to prepare a special A-two survey with, um, detailed requirements, and we would also, a- and we're, we'd also like to engage Franklin Survey to do some other survey work, they've done other survey work for us in, in regard to this project, that's for additional easements, for control points for the Boulevard, and also to upgrade existing surveys that we've authorized with them for eight sixty-one, eighty-nine Farmington Avenue, because we'll need eventually to, uh, file ELURs for those properties as well, so the upgrade to those surveys is another thousand dollars, so those are the actions that we're asking you to take.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, well, I mean, again, most of this we have certainly discussed before, we're at the point where we can, uh, take some action here, so, what do you guys think? Good?
Yes.
Good? Okay, so we'll go ahead and add this to our, there is, uh, obviously three separate, several motions here, but they will be included in our, uh, motion approved at the end of the meeting. Very efficient tonight.
Yeah.
He is brilliant.
I know. Agenda item number thirty-one, this probably needs a gun draw. We get in there, see the finish line, so this modification of the town contract with Newport reality concerning phasing, forcing decades, contingencies, modification of the crew for the award, the contract for the construction of the Boulevard after the train station, by the transfer and appropriation of two thirty-five for the Boulevard, one hundred thousand, for the Boulevard project, with the economic development. If somebody, yeah, somebody wanted.
Okay, um, again, this is, uh, who's, uh, we had a.
Jim, uh, Chris, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that hit the highlights, I mean, we just, y- you know, uh, I think, as we indicated, um, we want to get going on the Boulevard, because we're, we need to complete it by the end of the year for the steep funding reasons. Um, we just settled on the stipulated agreement with, uh, the zoning appeal on the twenty-ninth of June, so, you know, it put us in a, uh, in a bind in terms of timing, Newport's agreed to close on the first half of the properties, let's say, before they have financing, and they'll get the rest of the, you know, get the financing for nine thirteen Farmington Avenue, August, September, um, we would front the additional funds in the meantime, uh, to get this going, so we'd be able to sign the contract for the Boulevard, that's basically it.
Town Council, you're muted.
What happened?
We muted ourselves.
We muted ourselves, well, you know, some people might like that.
No, us.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you hear us, Jeff?
I can hear you now.
Yeah?
Good. We had a little secret, that's why. It's like an extension.
All right, yeah, right, quick, exact extension there. Yeah, I like that, I'm like, uh, thirty-two, what's that?
Thirty-two.
Wow, not bad.
This is the authorization for the town manager to form a town mortgage prospect to sixteen Arden Street.
Mr. Jen?
Yep, that one is me, it's Chris Edge. Um, yes, the Italian Club had gone forward with a facade program, they're now in the process of doing the project, um, much like we've done in previous properties, including nine twenty-one Farmington Avenue, they're doing a refinance. Essentially, all we're doing is subordinating the first position to the bank, um, this is something we've done before, and it is something we are able to do, just asking for, um, this body's approval to do that, so they can refinance and continue on.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then before, and, uh, the Italian Club, so what, uh, any other questions, Kevin? I mean, none? Go ahead and move this to our, uh, agenda approval. I don't know, yeah. I guess we're at the end.
Yeah.
Of these items. So, we're gonna take one big grand motion, I guess? All, all items but number twenty-one, I think, right? That was just a discussion, right? So all the items, one, two, three, two, excluding item twenty-one? I'd make a motion.
Make a motion to approve all the items, except for item twenty-one in this meeting's agenda.
Thank you. Take a second on that? Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions? Are we none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? All right. Wow. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Somebody pinch.
Trying to get the movement here. I, I'm sure it's a brief town manager report, so I. Whatever we got. Whatever we got.
Just, uh, thirty-second update very quickly, maybe two minutes.
No problem.
Uh, just good news, tax collection is going on schedule, nothing indicates that you'll be, but nothing indicate you're heading either. So, which is good news, uh, all this school stuff is coming in well, and, uh, no one's breaking down the doors to get in, uh, of course, it's not the last pick of July.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm hoping people are actually using the mail and the online system, because some people don't wanna be here, so which is good. Uh, the basketball, high, high school basketball court, we had some issues, that people were even flashing litter around with some signs, with some additional, uh, particular one of it, uh, going there Friday, their Monday, it, it is drastically better than, you know, fifty-one, the hands and sort of bottles, maybe by the ten.
Oh.
So people are paying attention, and we had the police go around, we had, uh, uh, security from the high school going, or seeing the parts of the school, then a couple of times, so that probably helped, so it's much better now. I think, uh, Monday, uh, Channel Three news calling to see if they have a story, but I said there's no story.
Story.
It must be a story.
They're grasping, yeah.
Yes. Story about the high school.
Yeah, trash.
There's no trash. So, um, swimming pools, uh, functioning, ran out, Debbie Dennis and a team to do some, swimming lessons, uh, people are beginning to sign up, the first week it's on like, ah, the capacity, the second, uh, listen, three-quarter pool, and the whole, the third and the fourth would get the capacity, so that's something extra for the residents, you know, some, so that we're applying all the social distancing and be careful about how the awkward passes, but people are there before they sign, they wanna do it. Just a quick update from Economic Development, uh, on Chris, I don't know the work that he's doing, um, Newport, um, Center, they have signed up, uh, two spaces, some losers there, the downstairs, remember?
Really?
So that's, uh, uh, and one is a coffee shop, the other one, I don't know, I think it's, uh, yeah, so it'll, they'll, we'll have more details later. Chris is there, giving, it's a floor, later we'll talk more about it, uh, about complete cheap metal, it's for the foundation, the one thousand square foot, foundation is already full, so they have ready to move, and, uh, superior heating and cooling, they'll be expanding building on, on the four, the four road, or another building, which is great because they're growing. Um, and the facade program, my, you have, you have all these bits from Tracy and Company, Derek Lee, Joey D, the Italian Club, Scholes Road, which is the boulevard there, and Newport Center, they are all, they're, so, so, you can see some improvements there. Other than that, it's not, the, the big one is, we are really excited about, uh, getting this to the board of the men's Boulevard project, and hopefully bought the contract before the end of the month.
Yeah.
They have said a hundred and twenty days, but, you know, issues with the supply chain, and how many takes to sort, sort of the materials and all that, don't give it chances, and I'm hoping we can get it completed before the, you know, absolutely fantastic.
That's right.
And, and you know, Newport is not waiting for us to complete the Boulevard, although the John, my building, they're all in check, signed, everything forward with it, so that, that would be really positive for the, um, with some excitement there, some work.
Yeah, that's phenomenal. Great, thank you. Two minutes. Yeah, very impressive. Um, special committee reports, I don't think we had any, right? Counselor Communications.
So long the idea. For the last couple of years, I've been asking why a school bus would park at Sage Park, and now Dollar General's parked, our trailers is, and we go and rent the trailer park, and it's about a hundred and fifty a month, it's something, how many?
They're parking more stuff there now?
Just Dollar General and parking trailer.
So we, I mean, we followed up with the school bus, apparently, this is what they're saying, fifteen, twenty years ago, they have a handshake video, they can pop the bus there, I said that was so.
You have to stop that.
Handshake deal.
It's sort of present now, and now I notice this week.
Dollar General, someone get picked up, so.
Dollar General, but they may have trouble something.
Wow.
It was good that it does a handshake, but, uh, those hands are not here.
If it was only that, I wouldn't have a problem, but now it's gonna grow.
Yeah, yeah. So that's kind of about it, this.
Oh. Okay, but I'll say, yeah. The only thing I wanted to mention, and this is, well, I mean, I think since the town, we should be extremely concerned about the police accountability bill that's before the legislature, uh, however you stand on it, really doesn't, you know, I mean, you know, I have my opinions on it, obviously, uh, but to take a bill of that magnitude and discuss it for one day on Friday, public comment, when I hear the voting on it on Thursday, that's, that's, that's just unbelievable to me, how terrible that is, I mean, you know how long we spend on topics here in the town, um, that don't have anywhere near the magnitude that that bill will bring to one force in our country, um, it's just, I can't believe our legislature will do that. Obviously, they don't understand, or they don't care about what quality immune, what immunity means, as someone who worked with it for thirty years as a federal agent, um, it's not what people think it is, if it's outside the scope of your alignment, you did something wrong, or you did something completely, uh, against the law, you are not immune from anything, as we see, saw recently with the Floyd case, so to change it, I don't know how many years that's been, uh, around fifteen, a hundred years, I don't know, it's been around forever as far as I know, but to, to take that discussion in about three or four days, or one discussion on Friday, I guess, and legislature's gonna be back, right? I believe, um, and to decide on Thursday is what people seem to be saying, even, even to decide in two weeks, um, that does not give whatever decision they make, on whatever side, may be unjust, so I, I, I don't know how they could do that to the state of Connecticut, that's, that's just a terrible, terrible precedent to set, um, you know, there's many other important issues they're looking to discuss too, and, you know, there's a couple other ones they're looking to discuss in this, uh, legislative session, which is a couple of weeks, but some of the bigger issues, like affordable housing and different ones that I mentioned, they're putting that off, so they could have a, you know, a little bit more of a lengthy discussion, um, that's, as an issue that they don't think is that important, apparently, that they can make a decision that quickly, and such an issue that will affect certainly all of our law enforcement officers in Connecticut, all of our committees in Connecticut, I, I don't care, again, where you stand on it, um, it, it needs much more discussion and much more study than it just come up and make a, a rash decision like it appears they will do. That's just my comment on that. But the rest of us think, but I, I, I can't believe they could do it that quickly, it's something that, to all our safety, public safety.
I just wanna take back, I said about May, we did what you just said, I think it's horrible. I listened to a good part of that hearing, if you will, on Friday, absolutely, oh, a lot of testimony. Real world is, uh, and not consider and look at it, or, in terms of things that are trying to push through, awful, we need to secure our, it's, it's, I'm a, I'm a, I'm here.
And, and, you know, just to make sure, I, I don't think I'm all built bad, from what I read, you know, it's my experience as a, one for a process, but it's just, it, it's certainly warrants some very serious discussion before you make a good decision. Yes, sir.
As a six-year veteran of the House, uh, they are a deliberative body, um, I have faith that whatever they do, uh, don't think it over, I mean, I, we've had issues when I was there, that public hearing lasted days, the, the example. I, I think our good reps and senators, uh, move all over the facts and come out with something that's, uh, acceptable, I, I, I have faith in, in the House and the Senate, I, um, after being there for so many years, and then, uh, working there with the state, I, I'd be surprised if it was something that, that all of us couldn't see. That, that's my humble opinion.
Yeah, anyway, I'm pleased to know our opinion's unquestioned.
No, no, it's just our opinion, it's no question.
Yeah, I think that one, certainly, you know, we need some things, though, flawed, so, once again. Population, let's, let's hope that they get the attention.
Any other comments and anything, Counselors? Okay, acceptance of minutes, July seventh. Twenty meeting, can I pick a motion?
Pick a motion, we accept the minutes of last week.
Thank you. Second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now to our executive sessions, take a motion at forty-nine, and move into the executive session.
Thank you, Colonel Space Statute one-dash-two-hundred-six-A concerning point nine appointment for appointment of evaluation, public.
Second? Thank you. Uh, just the Roche.
Oh, and Jeff.
And Jeff.
Just going to call in on that line.
Okay.
Brandon, I gave him the number, but I don't know.
All right, yeah. And do, we have, like, the, I, I didn't, no, I checked my emails today, but I don't.
So, let's go into the executive session.
Yes, let's do that. Let's do that. Let's do that. Let's listen to our analogy now here. All right, we're in. So, we're, so we are all in favor of that, right? Yes, so we're going down.
Set it down, and then I'll open the form on the day.
Yeah. I just didn't see.
We get some practice if you want, thanks.